... e-cigarettes. There is a vegetable base which is made out of vegetable oil, flavorings. I have some documentation here if you care to look at it. I brought it for you guys. Nicotine, poor flavorings. For me, I went from approximately two and a half packs a day to zero cigarettes. And I used nothing but e-cigarettes. I have, like this gentleman said, dialed down my dose of nicotine. When I walk my dog, I notice improvements in my breathing and my health. But let's just step back from the health issues. If you put a moratorium on this, you're actually hurting small mom and pop businesses. I mean, the age group that are opening these businesses are between ages of 18 to 34, and they do generate large amounts of income that go into city coffers. Also, that age group is being greatly affected by this economy. About a month ago, I went down to a vapor shop that just opened up on Crenshaw Boulevard. It's a nice vapor shop. They're just getting started. You know, this, me personally, I think why this dilification is happening is because I think this big businesses want to take it over. You know, this is an opportunity for mom and pops to start their own business. So, I mean, if you put a moratorium on this, I think it's going to do a lot more harm than good. And another thing, he says that...
My time up?
Can you wrap it up in 10 seconds?
You know what? He said that young kids are picking up e-cigarettes. I'm gonna tell you what. My son started smoking. You know where he got his cigarettes from? From me. That's probably where they're getting them, if they're getting them. This is not targeted to the youth.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Roth?
Good morning. My name is Trisha Roth. I'm a pediatrician, a public health and tobacco control advocate. I'm a member of the American Academy of Pediatrics. I'm also chair of substance abuse for our local chapter, which includes LA County. I'm bringing documents from the American Academy of Pediatrics, which I believe support your position. They support the amendments of the city tobacco retail permit and self-service or display ordinances to include the definition of e-cigarettes. I believe this is an important first step that local cities and counties must take to regulate products such as e-cigarettes. E-cigarettes dangerously appear to youth. E-cigarettes are heavily, are available in a variety of flavors such as chocolate, cotton candy, peach nops, java jolt, and pina colada. These flavors have been banned in traditional cigarettes that exist in e-cigarettes. According to the statement issued this month by the American Academy of Pediatrics, "Due to lack of regulation in e-cigarette marketing, children are impressionable and model the behavior of the adults and are at risk from viewing marketing aimed at adults." This is also a concern due to the increased number of e-cigarette users. These devices mimic conventional cigarette use and help to re-normalize smoking behavior. Because e-cigarettes are offered in many child-friendly favors, there's also a concern around toxicity. The nicotine cartridges refills pose a poison risk to children. Given the increased media attention and popularity of e-cigarettes, the public health community is faced with a daunting task of responding to aggressive marketing of e-cigarettes and advocating for policies to restrict the sale of minors and amend local youth access laws. I applaud Councilmember Paul Carretts and Councilmember O'Farrell and all the members of this committee for moving forward on these very important amendments today.
Thank you, Dr. Roth. And your timing was perfect. So our next speakers are going to be Austin Hopper, Aaron Knapp, Ben Tenorio, and Phil Damon. And just to clarify, the moratorium is for minors only. It's not banning the sales. It's a moratorium for minors. All right, let's, do we have Mr. Hopper?
Yes, right here. Thank you. Good morning, Council. I'd like to thank you for allowing us to be here and participate in this today. And what I'd like to say is that I'm actually within e-juice manufacturing. We do not market to children. And I do believe that there needs to be regulations that need to prohibit the sales to minors. I don't think it should be treated any differently than any other cigarette product. I think there needs to be taxes that need to be placed on it and all the things that we do for normal cigarette usage. Because I don't think that children should be buying products that are hazardous to their health. I don't think that it should be available to them. I think that there needs to be a sign on the store that says, "No minors allowed." I don't think they should be allowed to go into a store and buy those type of products. And as a manufacturer, we want those type of warning labels on the product as well. We have those on our labels. Because we do think that it needs to be something that parents need to be aware of when those products come home. They need to be able to see what that is, which is why we label our products the way that we do. I do think, because I'm on the Board of the National Council of Alcohol and Drug Dependency in Long Beach, I also serve on the AIDS Services Foundation Board, as well as cystic fibrosis, and there's a lot of people that are benefiting from these products that are used to smoking traditional cigarettes. I being one of them, from a former two-pack a day smoker. So I certainly understand why people want the e-cigarette themselves. So what I can tell you is this product is a safer alternative, and I don't think we need to do away with the product. I don't think we need to put a moratorium on it. I do think we need to tighten up regulations that minors cannot go out and get that product. I think there needs to be more awareness of what's in those products, because people need to know what their children are actually looking to do in the future. I do agree with the gentleman that said, "People do smoke because their parents smoke, and that's where they learn it." And if we can get the parents using the e-cigarettes, hopefully we can deter minors from smoking as well. So I think we need to do a lot of research and figure out where these people are coming from. I can tell you, the people that buy our product are from the age of 24 to 45. We don't have minors buying our product. We don't market it that way. We market it to actual adults who want a smoking sensation program, who are trying to quit smoking. Thank you for your time, Council.
Thank you. Thank you. And since the hour is already getting late, and we have full council in less than an hour now, and we keep getting speakers on this, would you all be amenable to limiting the testimony to one minute? Is that gonna work?
It's gonna work.
Let's do that, please. All right, we have Aaron Peterson Knapp.
Thank you. I just came because I am an e-liquid manufacturer as well, and I just wanted to speak to the ingredients in it as being, the gentleman who spoke before me was right in saying there's about four general ingredients: propylene glycol, vegetable glycerin, natural and artificial flavors, and the liquid nicotine. And the amount of chemicals in that have been shown in studies that unfortunately have not been done in the U.S. yet, but in other countries, New Zealand has done one, that has shown the levels of carcinogens in them are so much significantly lower than cigarettes that it's almost a non-issue. And so I just wanted to let you know that I support the moratorium on under 18 sales, on sales to minors, because they should not be consuming nicotine, just like they should not be buying cigarettes. And we don't market to children. We don't market to minors. And so I support that, but I do think that it does need to be known that e-cigarettes are a safer alternative to cigarettes and that restricting them to minors is appropriate, but beyond that, it might not be.
Thank you. Thank you. Ben Tenorio?
Tenorio.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, so I'm a respiratory therapist. I've been a respiratory therapist for almost seven years now. Me myself, unfortunately, was a smoker as well for almost 17 years, and nothing really worked for me until, you know, I started using the electronic cigarettes. I actually work in a vape shop, and we actually check IDs for every person that walks in there. Unfortunately, there are parents who are actually buying it for their kids. So I guess it's the responsibility of the parents to do that, to like limit everything, but we actually check IDs every time. And then when we find out that they're young, we actually escort them out. So it's not like minors are using all electronics illegally. Minors are actually using cigarettes as well illegally, but we don't, you know, it's not controlled. So it's not all the e-cigarettes fault that's going on in our community.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Damon?
Hi, my name's Philip Damon. I am the president of the largest vaporizing and electronic cigarettes trade association in the country. It's called SAFADA, the Smoke-Free Alternative Trade Association. We're based in Washington, D.C., with offices throughout the country, as well as in Hallandale, Florida. This is a very complicated issue that's been considered by many other jurisdictions across the country when it comes to vaporizing devices, which include what we commonly call electronic cigarettes. The Attorney General for the Commonwealth of Virginia was asked to consider a similar ban and law in 2010. Quite squarely came down into that electronic cigarettes are very different than tobacco products, and in fact, they were deemed not to be tobacco products. I think it's very important that we understand that in cities like Los Angeles, where there's economic strife and trouble, that this industry creates thousands of jobs and provides an alternative to adults in situations where there's already a moratorium and a ban on the sale of electronic cigarettes for minors. So we'd like the Council to consider the fact that this is technology, it's not tobacco, it has not been deemed like a tobacco product from the FDA, and in fact, it's something that will help stimulate the economy both here locally in Los Angeles and bring business to Los Angeles. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Damon. All right, and our next, thank you, gentlemen. Our next three speakers will be Mr. Herman, and Ryan Gage, and Joey Mariano. Good morning.
In this discussion, based on David's comment from DC, there's no proven science as to the effects of this product. I'm not for it or against it, but the testimony today has its grounds. I have an asthma problem. I use a treatment, and it has a vapor. So what's the difference from this item that triggers an effect to the mind to alter a problem you're having, such as a caffeine addiction or other addictions? It's probably a best alternative. So before we take any action and decide to make a motion and make an ordinance just for the taxes purpose, due to the fact that the city is in a stipend of a budget that they can't control, this is not the way to go, to lose business and stop business from growing. We are Americans, and we need jobs, and we need to enforce the idea that created someone creative with an idea that has no science to prove it and wait till the science proves it, the same way as a Monster drink. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Mr. Gage?
Yes, hi. My name is Brian Gage. I'm with a company I own called Firebrand Electronic Cigarettes. We're actually based in downtown Los Angeles. We're one of the larger e-liquid manufacturers, and we also distribute hardware online. I'm here to, one, question the moratorium, because to my understanding, the state of California already mandates that sales are illegal to minors in the state of California. And I would like to reiterate my company's position, as well of all the entrepreneurs, that I know that we are dead set against anyone under the age of 18 getting their hands on these products. In response to the person talking about flavors, we do market flavors, we do not market them to children, we do not want our products in the hands of children. I enjoy cherry flavor just as much as someone, you know, who would be considered a minor. So I would like that to be considered. We have age verification systems in place online, as well as with the retailers that we use. And I think that putting them under tobacco restrictions is, one, superseding the FDA's jurisdiction, and, two, it's harmful to people for this harm reduction alternative, and, number three, it's harmful to entrepreneurs like myself and others who have spoken today, not to mention the absolute explosion of growth for jobs and opportunities for people based around this innovative new product. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gage. Mr. Mariano?
Hi. I just want to give you some insight about vaping, something maybe other people haven't talked about so far. One thing I want to talk about is that smoking is social, and vaping is also social. What people want to do is break the addiction associated with nicotine and the other stuff that's in a cigarette that, like, such as MAOIs and ammonia that increase the effectiveness of the addiction capabilities of nicotine. Second is that we're building a vibrant community, and I know this is about community. We hold an organization that we call United Vapers. We get all the vape shops together, and vendors, and vapers, and we have a, you know, a gathering once a month. And everybody's very, very supportive of what we're trying to do, and we're growing in numbers, in monetary terms, in strength and influence. Another thing is that we're building businesses, lots of them. All these places that have been for lease for, you know, for months, we see that they're being taken up by people that want to open up vape shops. And the last thing I want to talk about is that vaping is advancement in technology, and you can't really stop technology. You know, even IBM back in the day couldn't stop what two people in a garage did with Apple. So that's what's going on right now. And the last thing I want to say is that...
Can you wrap it up in 10 seconds?
Yes. Thank you. A vote is a vote against advancement in technology, against community building, and against a fast-growing industry that helps to fund the city. So we urge you to vote against it.
Thank you.
May I follow up in 10 seconds on that?
Let's not. We've heard, we've heard, thank you, though. Fair enough.
I was just hoping that you could explain the moratorium versus what's already in place at the state level, as far as the selling?
That's, this isn't a two-way discussion, it's just for public comment, but thank I'm going to beg everyone's indulgence. This is the last speaker. We just got another card on item six. We just need to move this along. And we have, is it Alexander Kaplan?
That's me. Sorry, I tried to write that real quick.
All right.
All right. Hi, I'm Alexander Kaplan. Can I start speaking?
Please.
A student at USC Law. I could talk about the, our, the Public Health Code in California. I could talk about the injunction with the FDA situation, but I'd really like to tell you guys, my mother was a smoker for almost all of her life, since she was 15, 16. She had thyroid cancer, she beat it, but I'll never forget the moment when I came home to visit her after her thyroid surgery. She had the whole thing removed, some chemo, this and that, and she still had a Marlboro Red in her hand, okay? She still had that in her hand. She had a scarf covering the scar, and this was a day after the surgery. I'll tell you this, she hasn't smoked an actual, you know, burned analog cigarette in two years because of electronic cigarettes. She is completely stopped. We're not going to stop selling, you're not going to stop people, you know, in the state of California and LA from selling normal cigarettes, you know, traditional cigarettes, but if you stop them selling e-cigarettes, I mean, I think you're going to be doing a terrible disservice to public health. She stopped smoking a pack Marlboro Reds in a day, the whole thing. So I think that speaks pretty well.
And if we could have the city attorney's office come, please? And just to clarify again, this is not banning the sales of e-cigarettes. It's prohibiting the sales to minors.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Deputy City Attorney Selena Porras, and I'm assigned to the Tobacco Enforcement Program. I first just wanted to clarify that we do have a draft ordinance for council. However, this ordinance is not a moratorium, it's just an ordinance to protect children from electronic cigarettes and other emergent tobacco products, and to extend the same restrictions that apply to traditional cigarettes to electronic cigarettes. Protecting children from tobacco addiction and youth accessibility is a priority for our city attorney. The way that this ordinance accomplishes that is by, again, extending the same restrictions that apply to traditional cigarettes to all emergent tobacco products that contain nicotine, including electronic cigarettes. The first way would be by prohibiting mobile vending of electronic cigarettes, and by mobile vending, we mean things like catering trucks, ice cream trucks. Right now, it's illegal in the city of Los Angeles to sell cigarettes from an ice cream truck. However, this law doesn't apply to electronic cigarettes because it's not encompassed in the ordinance. We just want the same prohibitions that apply to traditional cigarette sales to apply to electronic cigarettes. The second way is by extending the self-service display ban that currently applies to traditional cigarettes, extending that to electronic cigarettes. In the city of Los Angeles, all tobacco sales must be vendor-assisted, which means purchasers cannot reach for their own tobacco. The seller has to, in fact, obtain the tobacco, give it to the purchaser, and check for age verification. That restriction does not currently apply to electronic cigarettes. It's critical that we extend this prohibition to electronic cigarettes, again, to reduce youth accessibility and make sure that minors are not able to evade the age verification laws and show proper identification. I believe most of the comments that were made were related to youth, and I, again, want to clarify that the motion that was presented in the draft ordinance that we have presented does not deal with youth at this time. Right now, we are just dealing with extending the same prohibitions of traditional, that apply to traditional cigarettes, to electronic cigarettes by way of an ordinance, not a moratorium.
Thank you, Ms. Porras.
Hi, my name is Nora Mansania, and I'm the Program Director of the Tobacco Enforcement Program. And I think for the last two years, we have received numerous complaints, inquiries, from not only council staff, but from retailers and from schools. We do receive many, many calls from principals, deans, letting us know that they've confiscated these products. What are they? There's a lot of confusion about it. So our unit, the Tobacco Enforcement Program, is responsible for retailers in order to obtain permits. So we have 5,200 retailers in the city of Los Angeles that are required through our ordinance to obtain a permit. So our unit is about protecting youth. It's about protecting kids from the accessibility of tobacco products. It has been since 2000, and all we are doing with the amendments of these proposed ordinances to our retail permit and self-service display are extending that to e-cigarettes. This is about youth, protecting and stopping the uptake of tobacco products and any product that contains nicotine.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mansania. And I have no comment, but Mr. Price?
Yeah, just, I'm thinking for the testimony, and if the testimony of those who spoke on both sides of this issue, or on all sides, I guess, of the issue, it's clear that this ordinance is limited to extending the prohibitions on access of youth, and I think that certainly is appropriate, and I support that totally. There is still a lot of confusion and certainty about the industry. That's evident by the inquiries going on, not only at the local level, but at the state level and at the federal level. And so hopefully, there will be some resolutions at that level. But I think this is certainly an appropriate, measured step to take. We need to protect our youth, and until we are clear what the real harm and/or benefits are of this, then they deserve the kind of protection that we currently give to other tobacco products. And so, Mr. Chairman, I'm willing to support this.
Thank you. I think from communications from the chair, I would advise you to go to the clerk and get this to council. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have a draft that we will transmit to council for your consideration.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to beg your indulgence one more time and go out of order again, and I especially ask for the patience of our commission appointments. We're going to go with item five, and that is, Mr. Clerk, if you please...
Item five, city officer, city administrative officer report relative to the Good Food Purchasing Program slash Executive Directive Number 24.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience.
My name is Anna Sage Tarpe, and I'm representing the City Administrative Officer. On October 24th, 2012, former mayor of Viragosa issued Executive Directive Number 24, the Good Food Purchasing Policy. City departments with annual food purchases greater than $10,000 were directed to adopt the Good Food Purchasing Pledge and initiate plans to follow the Good Food Purchasing Guidelines for food service institutions. Departments that control their own funds, including proprietary departments with the same food purchase threshold, were strongly encouraged to adopt the pledge and commit to implementing the guidelines. Also, on October 24th, 2012, council adopted the Good Food Purchasing Pledge as recommended by the Los Angeles Food Policy Council, supported the implementation by city departments of the Good Food Purchasing Guidelines, and directed the City Administrative Officer to annually report to your committee with the status of the department's efforts to implement the food procurement guidelines of the Good Food Purchasing Pledge. Thus far, a major achievement is when the Los Angeles Unified School District Board adopted the pledge. This year has been focused on gathering data. The mayor's office and representatives of the Los Angeles Food Policy Council have met with the city departments and their vendors to collect baseline data on purchasing practices and food service environments to establish a benchmark upon which future progress can be evaluated and to develop action plans to achieve compliance. The departments that submitted sufficient data for an evaluation and feedback are the Department of Aging, the Los Angeles Convention Center, and the Department of Water and Power. Accomplishments of the three departments, as well as LAUSD, are attached to the CAO report. Based on the baseline analyses, participating departments and institutions are now developing goals and five-year implementation plans. It is recommended that this report be noted and filed as it is submitted for informational purposes only. With me today are Paula Daniels and Alexa Delwich of the Los Angeles Food Policy Council, as well as other food procurement specialists, to talk about the importance of the Good Food Purchasing Pledge. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Ms. Daniels?
Thank you, council members. Paula Daniels, Chair of the LA Food Policy Council. Happy to be here today, and thank you so much for scheduling this special meeting to hear this today, because we are doing our Food Day celebrations this week and today as well, in the rotunda right now, going on and having some celebrations in council. It's important that this be seen in the context of Food Day, which is a movement toward a healthy, sustainable food system. And the Good Food Purchasing Pledge, which is unique to Los Angeles, it's a uniquely comprehensive and metric-based food purchasing policy, is a big part of moving the ideas of Food Day forward, as well as making these changes in our food system. Fundamental to this is the idea of good food, meaning food that is healthy, affordable, fair, and sustainable, and real, by the way, there's nothing fake about it. It's about good food and real food. So really, procurement policies are one of the most significant ways in which a city can take action to influence change in the regional food system. It uses our food dollars to encourage greater production of these foods along those five values of sustainable production, healthy eating, respect for workers' rights, humane treatment of animals, and support for the local small business economy. One of the highlights of the Good Food Purchasing Pledge is that it does include a value of the workforce, which no other procurement policy in the country does. So we have a comprehensive and leadership type of policy that the city council adopted last year. Thank you for hearing the report and moving it forward. I want to mention that we have a number of speakers here today to explain different aspects of how the pledge works. We have Alexa Delwich, who is the project lead on the Good Food Purchasing Pledge, and was the mastermind and architect behind a lot of it coming together, so we're really pleased to be able to have her testify and explain how it works and what the various departments have done. We have Dr. Paul Simon from the County Department of Public Health, and I'll ask him to come forward now. We have Joanne Low, Executive Director of the Food Chain Workers Alliance. Joanne could come forward as well. Matt Sharp from the California Food Policy Advocates, and Dad Madsen, who's the CEO of Gold Star, which is the distributor for LA Unified School District. Want to mention also that we have in the audience with us Emilio Castaneda. If you could just raise your hand. He's the president of Field Fresh. It's the largest regional food processor in the state of California. He's also on the leadership board of the LA Food Policy Council. Earlier, I saw Robert Egger of LA Kitchen and a number of other supporters. I want to just mention how much I appreciate the support of the CAO's office and their very thoughtful work in helping to prepare the report that you have with you today.
Terrific.
Alexa?
Thank you, Ms. Daniels, and thanks for your years of work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, committee members. My name is Alexa Delwich, Food Policy Coordinator for the Los Angeles Food Policy Council and Lead Staff for the Good Food Purchasing Pledge Implementation. Since January, we've worked with city departments in LAUSD, along with their food service providers and distributors, on their baseline compliance plans. In order to properly evaluate compliance levels, we worked with them, the whole supply chain, to trace their food purchases back to their original sources. We analyzed the institution's supply chain data and prepared detailed reports on how the institution's food purchases align with the Good Food Purchasing Guidelines. This baseline assessment is now being used to assist institutions in developing their goals and action plans to achieve compliance. We're proud to report that the Good Food Purchasing Pledge has had an immediate impact in the first year. Los Angeles Unified School District is on its way to achieving a two-star Good Food Purchasing Pledge status and has demonstrated remarkable leadership in transforming supply chains. LAUSD spends over 40% of its $128 million food budget within 200 miles. Through its Good Food Purchasing Pledge commitment, the school district has sourced around 70% of its produce locally, redirecting at least $12 million to the region without any additional cost to the school district. You'll hear from their food service vendor, Gold Star, about how they reformulated their baked goods in accordance with the Good Food Purchasing Pledge guidelines. And then within the city, the convention center, along with their food service provider, Aramark, was the first city department to enthusiastically sign the pledge. They're on track also to achieve a two-star status. A key achievement of theirs this year was to replace candy and snacks with fresh fruit near cash registers at checkout displays to encourage healthier eating behavior. Department of Water and Power and Department of Aging have also been active participants in the program, and we've been fortunate to have the enthusiastic involvement of Guggenheim who stepped forward to be the first food service company to volunteer to participate through their clients, Google LA and Roll International. We've developed a strong foundation to build on, and this coming year, we'll work with purchasers to develop their roadmaps for progress, provide technical support with upcoming RFPs and contracts, advise purchasers on supply chain labor issues, cultivate leadership and peer learning opportunities, and recruit additional LA institutions to sign the Good Food Purchasing Pledge. Congratulations to the good food purchasers, their vendors, and suppliers. Thank you to the CAO, and thank you to all of you for your leadership in building a more equitable and sustainable food system for all Angelenos.
Thank you, Ms. Delwich. And Mr. Lidd, we have speaker cards on the remaining speakers, so let's treat this as public comment, and if I could ask you to limit your comments to one minute, that would be terrific. Thank you. Can I have Dan Madsen?
Good morning.
Thank you for having me today. My name is Dan Madsen. I'm the CEO of Gold Star Foods. We are the categorical partner for L.A. USD. In 2010, we embarked on the bread and produce distribution to all the L.A. USD schools. We're proud to report, because of this policy and because of this pledge, that 70% of the products that we sell to the district today on the produce side is procured within 200 miles of Los Angeles. Of the whole fruits and vegetables that are procured, a majority of those are processed by Field Fresh Foods here in Los Angeles, so we're able to create hundreds of jobs within the city itself. With our produce initiative in 2010 and 2011, we then carried that over to the baked goods. And in July of this year, all of our fresh buns, rolls, and we're moving towards muffins as well. All the wheat is sustainable, and they're all California grown. Each bag is traceable to the farm, and includes water conservation, habitat preservation, air quality management, and workplace rights. So, we're just continuing to move forward on this, and we intend to extend this into 2014 as well.
Terrific, thank you. Thank you. And then I have, are you Mr. Simon or Mr.?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Simon?
Thank you. Paul Simon, I'm with the County Department of Public Health. I direct our Division of Chronic Disease and Injury Prevention, also a pediatrician, and also serve on the leadership board of the Food Policy Council. We've worked very closely with the staff and with Paula, and I want to acknowledge the great work that they've done. Of course, we're very concerned about the obesity epidemic and all of the health ramifications and economic ramifications. We're working very hard to educate the public about the importance of healthy diets. We're making some progress. Unfortunately, though, we still see in many communities, environments, where most of the food offerings are not the healthiest. And what's so important about this, I think, is that the city of L.A. is a big, big purchaser, and they can influence the marketplace. And we're seeing examples of that, that the food suppliers do respond. And so, we really applaud the leadership of the city, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. And I just want to insert here that would your department and the food policy folks be interested in joining me in a fitness challenge?
We'd love it. That's the other side of the equation, very, very important.
Because you talked about childhood obesity, it's very important to me. So, I've been speaking with a lot of people about this, and I will have a fitness challenge in the district, and I'd like, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but like that to be a regular happening in my council district.
Fabulous, and I'll leave my card with one of your staff members.
Terrific, right. Thank you. And I have Joanne Low, and then Ms. Sharp.
Hi, good morning. My name is Joanne Low. I'm Executive Director of the Food Chain Workers Alliance. We're a national coalition of unions, worker centers, and advocacy organizations. In L.A., our members include UFCW, Local 770, the Unite Here Food Service Division, the Restaurant Opportunity Center of L.A., and Warehouse Workers United. I have been actively involved in the creation and now the implementation of the good food purchasing pledge. To our knowledge, the good food purchasing pledge is the first food procurement policy in the country to include a commitment to labor standards for workers along the food supply chain. And this is especially important for our region, as in one in every seven and a half jobs is in the food system. But unfortunately, the average wage for non-supervisory workers is below the living wage, and so food workers use food stamps at a higher rate than the general workforce. So, the good food purchasing pledge is crucial to improving those jobs and supporting the good living wage jobs that do exist in L.A., and we look forward to continue to support the city in the implementation of this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, perfect timing. Thank you. Mr. Sharp?
Good morning, council members. Matthew Sharp with California Food Policy Advocates and a member of the Food Policy Council's Leadership Board. Wanted to give you a amusing historical note that illustrates the arc of history on this. In this committee, in 2001, CD 9 and CD 13 co-sponsored a resolution to try and reduce soda sales in the city parks. And so, it's been almost a 12-year initiative to engage and work with departments to try and make progress on this, and your renewed leadership and effort and engagement on this is going to make all the difference in the world. We're optimistic in 2014 to be able to make some of these improvements on the ground in the summer lunch and after-school snack programs that the city operates. As your comments earlier regarding the youth and the development of good formation of habits, those are the front lines of city programming to ensure that students develop good habits, in concert with what L.A. USD is doing in the schools. So, we look forward to coming back and announcing that there's been further progress in the subsequent years of this initiative. Thanks for your time this morning.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And do we have representatives from Recreation and Parks here today? Oh, thank you. Ms. Adams?
Hello.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Regina Adams, Executive Officer for Recreation and Parks. I saw in the CAO's report, it briefly mentioned about our department and as far as this new food policy. And where we are on this is that we have to take this policy to our Recreation and Parks Board, but also, too, I don't want anyone to misinterpret that the Department of Recreation and Parks hasn't been for a long time already moving in the direction of good, healthy food choices. For example, our current vendor that we have, that we've had in place for over a year for the vending machines, we have a requirement, there are a minimum of 40% of the items that's in the vending machines that we have throughout the city have to be healthy choice items. As far as also our department, many years ago, when the Children, Youth, and Family Department existed, we also worked with that department in a policy for children, as far as for healthy foods and so forth. What the thing that we're facing at this point, as far as the implementation of this policy that has been adopted by the council, is that we have many, many entities out there, over 40, as far as for concessionaires. We have brick-and-mortar restaurants. We also have mobile food vendors. We have vendors at the observatory. We have all over the city. And so, for us, we also have many contracts that are currently in place for all of these things, and so we have to phase this in. And we also have to look at our current policies that our department or our board has already adopted many years ago to make sure that, you know, that we don't have any major issues. It's also a reason for us to look at this, because we have to balance this with not only the requirements of the policy, the new policy that's been in place for about a year, but also, as far as, as I stated, things that are on our radar and things that our board has also directed us to do.
Thank you. And before you speak, Ms. Daniels, what I'd like to do is encourage, instruct, cajole Recreation and Parks to work with CAO on the procurement policy consistency and report back in a couple of months from now, maybe just before the, maybe the December meeting. And then, I already got the commitment from Rec and Parks that you'll join me in my fitness challenge, because I will have it at one of our Rec and Parks facilities.
Yes.
So, thank you for that.
No problem.
And Ms. Daniels, you have something to add?
Thank you, council member. I just wanted to mention that the good food, the executive directive, as well as the council motion, that the departments phase in. It is already in the good food, the directive and the motion that was adopted by council last year, that any department does not need to redo an RFP, but they need to include the language when the RFP comes in. So, we didn't expect a wholesale change. So, it is expected to be phased in as departments deal with that. And we do have proposed RFP language that we circulated, and that the Department of Water and Power already adopted and incorporated into their most recent RFP.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Price?
Yeah, I just want to applaud the food council and all the partners. This is, I think, a real significant undertaking, public sector, private sector, unions, community. And there's some, appear to be some immediate successes. And so, it's clear that this has to be a phased-in kind of program, and, you know, changing habits is not easy. Certainly, buying habits is also a challenge, but I think the steps that we're taking here are significant. And I think I heard that just unique to L.A., but around this country. So, we really are kind of setting some new ground. So, congratulations, keep up the good work, and let's do all we can to keep our communities healthy. You know, it's interesting the comment made about employers, a lot of them certainly in the ninth district, who are working the food industry, providing services, and then they come home and they can't feed their families a decent meal. And so, it is a, it's a real issue that we have to address in all parts of our city, especially in our underserved communities, you know, how we make good food available in a way that's easy and reasonable, and these habits need to carry over to our city services as well, so.
And we take it, Recreation and Parks, we take it very seriously, as far as for the children that we have in our programs, especially in our summer lunch programs and also our after-school programs, to make sure we provide them healthy snacks and so forth.
Thank you. Thanks again, Ms. Adams. Thank you, Rec and Parks. And so, I look forward to the CAO working with the Rec and Parks and reporting back in about 60 days. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now, we will move to our very patient commission appointees, and I thank you. I would like to, at this time, bring up Ms. Josefa Salinas, Josefa Salinas, I'm sorry, Ms. Mai Lassiter, and Gregory Bettinelli.
Okay, for the record, items two, three, and four are combined here. This would be for the appointment of Ms. Josefa Salinas, Ms. Mai Lassiter, and Mr. Gregory Bettinelli to the Board of Library Commissioners for various terms.
And I would like to hear from Ms. Salinas first, please.
Good morning. My name is Josefa Salinas. I'm a 23-year broadcast journalist veteran here in Los Angeles, working for various organizations. I'm also an executive director of a nonprofit that puts on summer programs for youth and a strong advocate of literacy, being a spokesperson for First Five L.A.'s Literacy Program, champion for children, Cash for College, working to distribute over 250,000 books to kids worldwide and interviewing over 1,000 authors over the 23-year career that I've had in radio here. So, I'm very, very passionate about books and literacy and very much involved in the community, being a community affairs director for 12 years and community liaison throughout the city over the years, and just look forward to serving the city and perhaps giving a new image to libraries and making it a central focus again in the city.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you. And Ms. Lassiter?
Hi, my name is Mai Lassiter. Thank you for having me today. I come from a marketing background. I was Vice President of Marketing at Sony Music before I had children. Now, I'm a full-time mom, but also do consulting and fundraising. My children live in the library. Our library is a Fremont library in Hancock Park, and I've met with John Zabo, the city librarian, and talked a lot with him about how we can get just all the programs that the library has, getting them exposed to a larger group of people, especially in underserved communities.
Wonderful. I'd like to recognize John Zabo, who is with us today. Thank you, Mr. Zabo. Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Bettinelli?
Hello, council members. My name is Gregory Bettinelli. I'm a 15-year resident of Los Angeles, two small children go to USD, L.A. USD elementary schools. I'm a longtime technology executive for companies like eBay and Hoot Look here in Los Angeles, and most recently, an investor in early-stage technology companies for the largest investment firm in Los Angeles called Upfront Ventures. I think what's exciting about the library commission opportunity is the library of 2020 will look very different there than the library of today. But its role in the community, its role in regard to citizenry, its role in literacy and thoughts and open communications are more important than ever. I think there, as others, there's a, library has a marketing problem, or I'll say, marketing opportunity. The amount of services that our libraries provide are underrepresented in the community. I think it's a huge opportunity, and I look forward to help pushing those objectives forward.
Terrific. And I had the great privilege of sitting with Ms. Lassiter for a while, and we bonded on several, you know, ideas and values with the library system, one of them being that I spent my childhood in the libraries as well, both in the public school that I went to and in our public library in the town that I grew up in. So, and clearly, I can see the passion in all three of you when you talk about your mission here. So, I would love to hear just one or two major points of view that you bring into this discussion as a commissioner.
I look forward to making the library the place where people can go for resource the way it used to be. Kids don't even know about libraries, many of them. They don't go to the library for a resource, and I think that there's an opportunity to not only expose the existing programs, but to bring new and innovative programs so that the library is more than just a place to come for a book, it's a place to come for anything you might need in your community, that it becomes the place, that it's cool again. And I think with the commissioners that we have on board, that we are going to teach everyone and give a new image of the library and bring some very innovative and exciting programs to the City of Los Angeles library.
Go-to resource, I like that. That would be, you know, a sea change, because it certainly wasn't cool when I was a kid, but if we can make it cool now, that would be great.
Yeah. In meeting with John Zabo, I had been hunting down a book for my 11-year-old, and so I had gone, called one library and gone to another library to find the book, and he said, "Oh, well, you know, you don't need to do that. The library moves thousands of books around the city every day." I said, "What? What are they moving them in?" And he said, "There are vehicles." And I go, "Well, are the vehicles wrapped? Can we somehow let the community know that they're..." It would be just a kind of, any program that the library had, you could wrap the vehicles, let the community know that the library actually exists and that there, it's a moving billboard for the library. You could put quotes from authors on it, you could, I don't even think you'd have to have a sponsor, because you wouldn't want branding on it. I would try to fundraise for it, and it can't be that expensive to wrap. I don't know how many there are, but I don't think there are that many vehicles.
Great idea.
Yeah, you could do it for free.
Wrap it.
Right.
Mr. Bettinelli?
Yeah, I look at two key areas. One, we're in what we'll call community. It's really understanding constituencies who use the library, from young families to students, to people tutoring students, to people seeking jobs, to people retired, to people who just use the general library services, as well as the services around people who want to become citizens, people who want to get access to healthcare, people who want to understand how community works. I think the library is the neutral place where all that can happen. So, I'm excited about really getting a better understanding and promoting those services and potentially do better. The second is clearly the technology side of it. I think it's not going to take rocket science to understand that that library will change and that books, libraries are so much more than books, and the idea of what technology can do, not just from a literacy perspective, but access to information, to explore the creative opportunity that people have. I think the library can and should be the focal point of that, and I think there's going to be a lot of discussion. I think Los Angeles has an opportunity with a librarian who is on the forefront of thought process in regards to libraries, could be in a commission that could kind of make that happen.
Terrific, terrific. Mr. Price?
Yeah, let me just congratulate the prospective commissioners. I know you're going to do an outstanding job. I know Ms. Salinas personally, of course, and she, her commitment to this community is long established over the broadcast airwaves, and so we appreciate your commitment and the commitment that you all have made and are making. We know how important the libraries are. Steve Zabow back there, we had a chance to meet first, I think, at the celebration of the 100th birthday of the Vermont Square Library, where I grew up. It was my hangout. And libraries do just play such an important role in our community, and it's exciting that you're going to be there with the kind of enthusiasm and creativity you have, as we can try to really expose it and make that the place to be, make it a cool place to be for our kids and families. I think it's a real resource that we have, and we're going to be lucky to have you on as commissioners. Ms. Chairman, I support the motion.
Terrific. Congratulations. We will, from communications from the chair, move you forward to confirmation to the city council, and we thank all three of you very much for stepping up. And a recommendation to Mr. Zabo, maybe, not maybe, but if I could ask you to report back to the committee on what it would look like to wrap the transport vehicles with the messages of "We're a go-to resource and we are technologically accessible with those messages." Report back what that might look like. Terrific. It's way cool. Listen, I know it's cool now. It just took me a long time to learn that. Thank you so much. And I didn't recognize Mr. Our zoo, our zoo president here as well, who has been so helpful in years past. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, just one point of clarification. Item five, which is scheduled for council date, the original recommendation was to note and file the CAO report. Do you wish to do that, or rather, hold the item in, well, we can't hold it in committee since we're going to council, or add on to CAO and Rec and Parks to report back in 60 days? Do you have that recommendation?
Move forward.
All right, then we'll do that.
Thank you. And before we adjourn, we have one public comment from the constituent, and I know you wanted to comment on item one, but we had heard that before you arrived, but if you would like to tie that into your comment, that would be, that would be fine. Thank you.
For the record, my name is Armando Herman, Boyle Heights resident, constituent, Californian.
you would like to tie that into your comment, that would be, that would be fine. Thank you.
For the record, my name is Armando Herman, Boyle Heights resident, constituent, Mr. California. I would file a Title III complaint, this is one form, Title II, the Americans with the Disability Act, Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 discrimination complaint form. Unfortunately, there's been an ongoing situation at Hazard Park, H-A-Z-A-R-D-P-A-R-K, Hazard Park, in Boyle Heights, off of the Soto Corridor between Valley and Marango Street. I already asked for the permission of one of the agencies, which is Caltrans, to repair one ramp and provide access through curb cuts on the corner intersection of Marango and Soto. At this point, Jose Wezar and his staff have denied people with disability access for the last 10 years and have continued to place a barrier on the public sidewalk. Now I find that offensive and an insult to people with disability, to the elderly people in our community, and for those people who are being detoured and have this distraction of, an obstacle on our streets for the last 10 years. I ask that Parks and Recs or the Department of Bureaus who engage in these types of, now it's not an allegation, it's a fact, it's a statement. And before I take this to the Department of Justice and report it, I give you some significant time to come up to a particular timeframe to assess this situation. As you may know, that I've been in council chambers numerous times, talking on behalf of people with disability, and if there's a discrimination towards any population of persons with a disability that you disagree with, I wish to have that spoken before the council chambers and request a motion to hear this particular item at 4200 Verde.
Mr. Herman, I need to cut you off, but that's the address I was going to ask that. It's 4200 Verde is where you're claiming there is the.
Barrier.
Okay. 4200 Verde. My office will look into that, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a good morning.
You too.
See you in council chambers.
And this meeting is adjourned.